Let's call the main orders. Uh, please stand, John. I'll have orders for the president.
Let the nation speak freely. United States of America, the King of Republic, which stands one nation under God, in the wisdom, that we will do justice for all. Texas, Texas, state of God, in the wisdom.
Over thank you this morning. Thank you for a good day. We thank you for many blessings, Lord. We thank you for all the attendees that are, uh, court with us today, God. We ask you to keep your hand up on each and every one of them. Lead and guide us, God, and we may make the right decision for the county, God. We ask that you bless each and every one in this upcoming season. And we ask that you remind people and let them be conscious of what this season is all about and give you the praise. Jesus Christ, excellent.
Isle number four, public comments.
Can I pass right now, Judge? Let Mr. D. go first.
Good morning, your honor. Commissioners. Uh, I am one of the rest of the people that transpired at our last commission report. I think that at the end of it, it was one of those rare days that...
And so I have to tell you what's sitting here. That's supposed to stick with what's on the agenda. That's what you're supposed to tell them.
Well, yes, but it's only fair that I be able to... Because this came at the end of the day. And I don't care if they're angry or say they're nervous.
Stick to the rules. Please, sir, please, please stick to the rules. You got something on the agenda, please talk about it. Daniel Sapolsky. And I apologize for butchered your name.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I'm clerk and an audience. Actually said my name perfectly. Thank you. Sapolsky. Uh, the reason I'm here, I was told it would be the best to try to get everyone together at one time, if possible. Normally, we try to present our road repair material at a demo in person. Um, but this is an opportunity to present it to you. If it's okay, I'd like to also...
Where are we going? Both pages of material later, I guess it's a pretty good thing.
May I approach to hand you all this to pass around? It's got some images on there.
Sure.
Okay. This is actually... You go to a lot of the different commissioners trade shows, so you may have seen us out there.
Are you may there in Bryan College Station in February?
Yes, sir, I will be.
All right.
So, as you'll see in that image...
You already signed it.
Who is it? I'm sorry. Uh, so, as you can see in the image there, uh, that's what our boot looks like at the trade shows. Uh, we generally don't have to go to bid for a material because it is not a man-made, created, manufactured asphalt. So, it's really apples and oranges. This is an all-natural mined asphalt. The first two roads that were ever created in North America, to our knowledge, in the world, came out of this mine.
You're testing on something that's gonna be talked about a little bit later on about... I had to go after bid. I guess if you sell the quantities under fifty thousand dollars, you probably wouldn't have to.
Correct.
Unless you're trying to say this is some... Y'all have got the market corner. Y'all... If it's a sole source, uh, only can be provided from one source. That's an exception to the rules as well. I just had read them this morning, man.
Yes, sir.
But go ahead.
Thank you, man. And everything you're saying is absolutely right. As the image shows that you're looking at, we're Buy More, Lender, Tips, Choice Partners Cooperative.
That's another exception. You're going to buy more. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, as you can see in this material, that I think maybe everyone got there, um, it says paving roads since the eighteen hundreds. This mine is out of Evolvy, Texas. Uh, in the world, to our knowledge, there's only two mines where naturally occurring limestone was at the base, uh, under the ground. And the volcanic pressure actually impregnated the bitumen or asphalt naturally into the limestone. So, here is, and it's kind of lighter. We usually, you know, bring this at the demo. This isn't sprayed on here. This is just a naturally mined rock. So, what we do, and we sell the textot.
Good Lord, got the mixture just right up on there.
It's amazing. I really can say it's like exactly right. So, so, textot has a spec of a quarter inch. You might be familiar for, uh, rays and also the repair material. What we do is take it and do one more refining process where about half that batch is, uh, down to, uh, mined down to fines. And so, as that picture shows, we have a little hand press that we bring. And we put our material into the press and just with hand strength, compress it, and it becomes this. So, if I were to put that bottle upside down on here, water's not gonna go through it. And the science supports of why hot coals are blowing out. It's water gets underneath, erodes the base, and it keeps popping out. You see that out of the...
Is that kind of like taking a big glob of material, a lot of it up, putting it in a bucket of water, and then whatever's left, if it's only weighs that much, you figure it's fifty percent or...
Um...
That's why I did it when I seen one down, but I...
Yeah.
Go ahead. I ain't trying to...
Yeah, that's good. You know, so, a- as the picture on this, this one shows here, manufactured asphalt is just pieces of rock and gravel that chemicals and glue are stuck together, try to hold it together. And so, what you're dealing with, with the weather, is you're hoping that it can hold up, uh, water doesn't go through it, uh, things of that nature. But that's a big problem. Cold mix, travel, all these other things. Um, and you all know, poples just don't last. Our material, because it's, it's pressure that actually pushes out of the limestone, the porous rock, it holds itself together.
Well, I'm getting to the box line. What does it, what does it sell for?
So, we have...
So, I don't know about the, you know, our bag.
We deliver it, um...
Bag.
We have both. We have it, uh, we can do bags, which we do sixty-two bags for power, which is nice to have on multiple trucks, also a lot of the...
Small bag for fixing poplors and things.
Yes.
Okay.
It, our material is currently mined by Vulcan out of that plant also for complete roads down to the quarter inch spec. The repair material that we have, uh, which can be used for utility cuts, it can be used to repave roads also, but mainly for repairs, is, is in bags, fifty-pound bag, which is a lot cleaner, easier to work with, as you can see, you can touch it, not dirty. Uh, the weather has nothing to do with it being road ready right away. So, what I would like to do, if possible, today or the next couple of days, is schedule with each of you a demo, show you the material we use. I keep it in my truck. Go out to a poplar that you all choose and...
Probably, whatever, after we get through the meeting, someone will look at it. Real bad, Josh.
Uh, we only sell for twenty to the, to all of Texas.
Sure.
Twenty dollars a bag. We have a super sack also, which I can hand you an image of.
Oh, I think I had like... Is it a fifty-pound bag?
Yeah. So, the other thing with ours is our fifty-pound bag, because it is a lighter rock, it does, it covers seven square feet per bag, one-inch thick. All the other different types of bag asphalt's only covered four to four-and-a-half feet because their rock is heavier. So, ours covers more because it's a lighter material. We also have, which, is it okay to hand this to you, sir?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, I didn't know where you was going, but generally, were you invited here?
Uh, I thought...
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, yeah. Figured it'd be easier to get you all in one place, but I'd love to meet you outside here, uh, another time. But the super sack that we have in that picture, so we deliver all these, that cost that I told you as far as the bags, that's delivered. Sixty-two bags for power.
Sixty-two, that's what I had.
Yeah, sixty-two bags on a power. Uh, that super sack, it's twenty-four hundred pounds, but it is equal to what thirty-six hundred pounds would be from, like, a cold mix from Waller. So, thirty-four dollars a pound, which is... For the bags. The, but the super sacks is, has a lot more savings there. They've got big hoops on them. They can be lifted, opened up the bottom, and dropped into the truck if you've got, like, a bigger job to do. And that is only five hundred and twenty-one dollars.
About two thousand and four hundred pounds.
However, as far as coverage goes, the math is a little different because it's a lighter material. So, the equal math would be thirty-six hundred pounds of cold mix is, is equal coverage to our twenty-four hundred pound super sack. So, really, what I would like to do with you all, if possible, is have the opportunity to meet you maybe one day next week for twenty, thirty minutes at a poplar in your area and actually perform a demo for you. And then maybe see what you think is, is what I would like to do, if possible.
Joe, I have to meet you. I guess unless it's up to you, I think.
Okay. You can visit with some lawyer, point blank, right over there, too. My seven, without a P D.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all.
Very welcome. Have any of you guys had an opportunity to review the specifications on this material?
Well, I never said before, I'll, uh, if I could get a copy of the specs.
That's what state Texas you...
Thank you, Judge. Commissioner...
I'm, uh, I'm making the... Um, I kind of want to talk about fourteen. And, uh, nothing in particular, it's, you, it's Mark, but, uh, yeah, like, I, I got up this morning and I looked at the U.S. debt. The U.S. debt, I asked it this morning when I looked at it, it was thirty-six trillion, one hundred and seventy-three mil- billion, five hundred and seventy-one million. And that amounts to one hundred and seven thousand for every person in the United States. I talked to the citizens, everybody that's here. Anyway, um, and, you know, the ARPA funds was all about COVID.
That's twelve zeros, folks, just so everybody knows.
Yeah. And I just want to remind you that we had an election, and it was overwhelmingly conservative, except for some of the blue states. And I, I understand what y'all are trying to do and everything, but at the same time, I would urge you to, to try to be as conservative as possible in this situation.
Let me tell you, when we first got the notice about the ARPA, my initial reaction was, we don't... Then I got the same thing. All our people in our county, this access, well, that was, every county in the whole country is getting X number of million dollars, depending on their size. I said, at least we'll get some of that money back so we can do some things to help our constituents. And then we try our best to do this.
So, do you think that, I guess, do you think that, if you know, you showed the sideboard, you don't have this money if we don't spend it? Where does it go?
Winds up going back in a pot, and they usually spend it again anyway.
There you go.
I know, I totally realize that. But, so, the other side of the coin is, is I'm gonna tell you, when I was elected commissioner, a man that I highly respected and listened to told me, you know, one of the things he told me was, he said, he said, county commissioners are, can steal more money than any other elected official in the state of Texas. That's what he told me. Anyway, I'm not gonna argue that. I'm just telling you what he told me. And I didn't even know this was on the agenda until somebody pointed it out to me, and he said, they asked me what I think about it, and I went, that doesn't sound real good, you know? The wording of the agenda item is very suspicious, in my opinion. And I'm gonna take it as my opinion. There's nothing issued, Commissioner Morris, at all. It's, I just, I'm urging you to make sure that we follow the rules and we don't particularly overspend and abuse any of these situations. Though we, we still are in debt, and I would remind you, Judge, I have a grandson, you have a grandson, I have a nephew, and, and our kids, and our kids' kids are gonna be paying for this in the future. So, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
What comment did you say? Did you call the government, who's in charge of everything, and say, well, this is thirty-four billion dollars, you're great?
No, I'm just asking you that question. I have, I have been verbally outspoken to my congressman, yes.
Or the twenty million dollars we just saw from yesterday? No twenty million?
I'll guarantee you that our congressman, if you tell him my name, he'll, he'll be talking about...
But all these roads I can relate, these are roads that I just, uh, two weeks ago, I did three roads, was a hundred and sending out a thousand dollars that I stayed on them. So, that's why I use this on my files, like, modern roads.
Okay. I, I, I totally understand. I'm just, I'm just pointing out the fact that the wording to the agenda item, I don't...
They don't have to think another way to do it. They're not gonna leak the auditors, they're not gonna let us think for stuff we've already bought. We're gonna have to be more creative about how we do it. That's my opinion. And I don't, I say no more till we get to that fourteen.
I, I was just trying to express my opinion, and, and I think there's a lot of other people out there that maybe not want to stand up and say this, but I'm trying to just express my opinion.
Appreciate it.
I think it's a good idea. I just don't know how we're gonna clear the auditors.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't want to just have to give it back.
Anyway, thank you, Jim.
Yes, sir. Was there anybody else that had, uh, public comments? I didn't see any other phone. If not, we'll move on along. Isle number five, announcement of possible discussion of items of public community interest for which no action will be taken. Uh, Chris and Sal and Spire are coming up, uh, this, this Saturday. Like, there's a parade. They've been there all day. It's a great, great event. Hope to see everybody out there.
This, this will be Mr. McNally and Mr. Brandon's last commission sport. I was about to say, thank y'all guys, for what's happened.
Me, too. Everybody, what, uh, Mike, you have twelve here?
Chris Brennan, Chris McNally, you have ten.
Ten in this position, so.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna leave some valuable...
No, yeah. I don't, I still got their number, unless they change their phone number.
You said over there?
Yeah.
I know where they live. I think David's got, Mr. Brandon's got a speech or something. He was reading, it was done. He was doing his work, done, and...
Thank y'all guys.
Yes, thank you.
Gosh, there's something else up there. Thank you, everybody. I was seeing this on the website. TCQ sent me a letter about a month ago about, they're forming a municipal, there's a petition to create a municipal utility district, number fifteen. And I think that's associated with the new subdivision that's going in. Commissioner Brandon's precinct out there on their file, about fourteen hundred, almost fifteen hundred acres. Capital Creek Ranch, LLC, and, uh, and a municipal utility district is far better than a emergency services district. There might have been a little confusion amongst some about whether this was just on the E S D creation, this board, Commissioner's court, points to board of directors, and is responsible for putting notices in the paper and yada, yada, in connection with the creation of the E S D. But a municipal utility district can be created either by petitioning TCQ or getting the legislature to pass legislation creating it. Either way, we have nothing to do with how the members of the board are calling it. Anyway, um, I'm pretty sure this, assuming they sent it to you, the post on the bulletin board, it's a definite bulletin.
It has been.
I, I know it does.
So, I don't think they can clear the board because somebody owns land with a property.
I don't know.
I think they're going to the application process with TCQ.
For sure, that's it, 'cause...
E S D is great under health and safety.
But Mr. Russell bought some of that land up there that, some of that shore was put in, like, the sun.
That was a specialty.
They had to leave it, they took houses on it so we'd make a vote, uh, vote.
I researched the rules, 'cause we don't have the authority here, other than to pass the word to our constituents. And that's what this intention is to do. That's what I'm trying to do. Anything else on the aisle number five? No, I guess we'll move on to, uh, other business. Isle number nine, consideration discussion, possible vote to approve the former directors of emergency services district number two. That's the one up in Waterwood. That was only a agenda last time. They had a, uh, an election that passed to create a second E S D, emergency services district in the county, which encompasses an area up there in Waterwood, probably, if I say. The original had included maybe six thousand acres, and I think they trimmed this down to a couple thousand acres, I believe, if I'm... Fourteen forty? Fourteen forty? Fourteen forty, yeah, okay. Fourteen hundred and forty acres. Up, and up there. I had an email from a fellow. He was at the meeting last time. Is that fellow still here today?
He's not here today. It was Patrick Marshall, and, uh, he's sitting there at his man. He's supposed to be in this, in this, uh...
I've got it right here. Let me take a peek at it. That's the only communication I have had. I figure you may have had... I'll tell you, you're precinct. Judge, I've got this, and it was...
Texted me last night. And I, I just sent the table, and I can get the list distributed, and the next call will be with the new numbers, anyway. I'd say this week, week of next call.
That is Marshall, that's his... Is that...
Yes, that's him. Is anybody else in Waterwood? I heard some head shaking, one of them, James here. Anybody else? Oh, Sam, I'm sorry.
Nobody else? Well, I didn't ring the statute either, but I thought we were under some obligations lifted on this, so that we're supposed to do something by January, is what I understood. And I fully expected that there'd be some recommendations put forth by the community, but I hadn't seen it. They may all be going through you. That's, that's one right there in the email, and then there's two below it that, that I was recommending to you. Then I've got a, I've got a text here. I can leave you the name, but y'all want to just pick them blind. I just know, I, as my, as my understanding, that we were supposed to pick them by, by the end of the month. The statute, if I remember right, said something about what we were gonna do by January first, or what they were supposed to do by January fifth. Normally, when we, I know with the other board, uh, the board approves all five, but generally speaking, it's five of us, and we each kind of were responsible, come up with one, one name, so I've come up with one. But...
There's only one guy sent an email.
He sent one. Man, I know a few others, uh, up there, but I hadn't had a chance to, people I was thinking about, uh, I hadn't been able to get in touch with. Now, you may have. No, I just, I'm just guessing. There were some people by the last name of Lloyd, and there were some people, the other, Chris and neighbor in E S D. I don't know if they still live up there, though. We discussed them.
Yeah, no, Chris and then they sold, they sold up, Chris Williams, they sold their properties.
Williams, yeah, that name was why, they the one who made a great representative, but they're not there.
So, you have the election certified, obviously.
Sir? Election's been had, and I think we approved, yeah, I think we signed whatever order we were supposed to sign.
They going, uh, to tell they into this deal?
No. They want to do, do their own thing, that's... When they, they were fixed, cut out of, that was their request years ago, it wasn't... So, this, this, uh, I don't know about appointing directors in Waterwood, there's a whole file on that, the statute and everything, it's, like, I might need that. Want you to bring that up there, too. What, what you got? What I like to do is move on to other business until I get my vote here. I should've been in here. At least I could read the statute, determine whether we really, I mean, if we can legally move it forward or cannot do anything, and that, I just, I thought we were, we had an obligation to act. We'll come back. Mr. Jamie, you did bring in your material that has statutes and all that good stuff in it, did?
I did not, but it's my recollection that some, some seventy-five is on here.
Seventy-seven-five, that sounds good.
That, uh, it does say that the importance should leave a point in the year, but I don't know how much.
Yeah, yeah, well, I could, I could...
Here, sorry.
Well, I pulled it up on here, if you're...
See, you must have stayed on, uh, campus, not solid there. See, I mean, I would...
Yeah, okay. Petition, we've done all that petition. We had two petitions actually. I only went forward on one and they had directions on it. It uh, was passed by healthy majority. What was that guy's name? He was the last name, that was all I crossed the upper. We got, got it, bear in mind. Okay. Okay, same thing. Good, yes. So once a week, two weeks hearing, we've had all that petition was approved. Reflection results on commission, court order, we've signed that. We signed that last time, we just did not point, do the appointments yet. Overlapped with this. Blue. Got a little tablet I brought along, I started writing it. It's hooked up to the, the laptop, but uh.
You got, you got your own internet or do you, using the laptop?
Who's in here? You know, five years and I might get COVID for that, so I log in too. I'm going to work. It's very difficult. It's not a situation. Oh, thirty, that one. Freezing right up on. Oh, thirty-one, oh, thirty-four. Fix that location. Hockland Board, that's oh, thirty-four. Hockland Board, Fish and Court of Accounting, Shell, four and five member board. Serve on the board, a member of the board must be eighteen years old. And a resident citizen of the state of Texas. And qualified voter within the area served by the district or owner of land subject to taxation by the district. Except prescribed by subjects C, that's sort of two-year terms. So C, I think when you first started. Some of them are going to do a one-year term, so we're not replacing everybody. On January first, court shall point, is successful. The oh, three, five, just to be located in more than one camp. To go back and greet. Oh. Any way they can. Mr. Jamie, yeah, I thought y'all were, I know I've asked email over a month ago, right after the election. I assumed they were going, y'all were going to have some names you wanted to have considered. But you have those names with you?
Uh, I didn't have the name. Uh, we, we discussed and requested the information from a lot of the residents up there.
Um. You went over around the volunteers to serve.
Uh, well, you know, some of them are happily retired. Uh, I understand, but we, we did submit a list and Commissioner Tino's already was, uh, you know, in his regards, a, a last minute submission. But uh, we, we did, uh, just lease up at the office, did uh, interviews with people that were, both interested and qualified. And uh, she submitted the list, uh, to the Commissioner Tino after.
Where's the list?
I got it right here on the phone. I got it in text, that's. There's a guy named Derek Worsky, what?
I got him saying, right? But he's on that list, I said, you know, yeah. And Marie Murphy. Who? A Marie, M A R I E, Murphy. A Greg Riley. A David Ellis. You got, did he give you any contact information?
I've got, no, I've just got a little prescription, what they're bringing to the table.
I forgot Brian James. Wait a minute. So they all want to talk to him, ladies and gentlemen. Brian James. And then Ronnie Dossey.
Dossey.
How do you spell it?
D O S S E Y, that's how this is going.
Wilson Lannan, a fellow that came to court, he's coming straight there at Bexhill. Patrick Marshall.
Is it Marshall or Murphy?
All right, well, there's. Okay. And then there's one more name that's, that's right there. There's some that live. I don't really know where you found it. Barry Mason. Y'all know, is it lady? Mason, Barry Mason?
That is a little herder, uh, just in passing. Uh, yeah, I know. I don't much bother. I know you mentioned Mr. Lloyd, uh, he, he declined to do the cell fishing.
Who?
Mr. Lloyd you mentioned earlier.
I just know he's a good man. His wife, he worked for me, it's back in ninety-eight when I got appointed one time. Very good folks.
Yeah, we did so too when we asked him, did he decline this person, I'm pretty sure.
Here I am, right, I love your, uh, I'm going to make a note that Mr. Lloyd, wow. And Chris Williams. So uh, therefore he wouldn't be eligible. She worked for the sheriff's office, I think dispatch herself one time, did she? I know she, she was on Hammond. Maybe, maybe, she was involved and never had some.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have, I think the schedule has another meeting, but we never had that last meeting. It's all up in the middle of the twenty-seventh. Yeah, the twenty-seventh. I wouldn't be opposed to having, I feel some obligation to follow the rule. Uh, but uh, we're going to be congregated up here for, uh, since by January first. We're going to congregate up here, I assume, to swear new folks in. I guess you could have a wide of them attend to, do that then. That'd give us more time to. I mean, you probably haven't had time to check everybody out either, haven't you? In your precinct, I was kind of referring.
I don't know, I don't know about any of them. I mean, I just got it by the side of the seven, seven up three is when it came in. And actually, one of them is at six fourteen this morning, seven forty-eight this morning. But I was just on the pressure to wait till the first, first call of January. I know it says that, but our other appointments are up too. And why would, why would we wait? Why would, I'm asking this, don't we all need?
But it's our appointments, sir, I'm not telling. Two, four, yeah. Well, it's not one of three's, uh, the other here.
Sure.
Do y'all have anybody in mind, uh, as far as y'all, if we did something now? I mean, uh, I admit, I met the one fellow. He seemed like a nice enough fellow. His credentials looked all right to me, I don't know. Lot of times they, credentials can look swell and then they get up there on the board, get hit some tire in their hand. And then you see what they're made out of. That's why some of those things work, work. Well, it's not like we're trying to, we push y'all out of the city. That's why I keep taking that. But I can get in store, what's I do or something. They're bad, they're laying on a person.
So, so I'm sure they submitted them, that they either own land or they're registered owners.
She did, the, the list was provided, she did, you know, in office, every one of them and verified their credentials. But you know, if you want more stuff, I'm sure that could be provided before the end of the year.
So Presley and Boski is a former manager of Hockland City, I guess. And then the Marie Murphys, retired legal secretary. Greg Riley works with companies negotiating contracts, uh, with communications. Is he in your communications deal? Greg Riley? Is he in your internet program?
I need to ask.
David Ellis is retired finance director of University of Houston. Brian James is real estate and government contract grants. And Ronnie Dossey is medical occupational physical therapist. And then.
Patrick, did you, is it Uncle, is it Uncle? You don't have any phone numbers where you could tell?
I don't have any, she didn't give me any phone numbers on that.
I would have liked to have any that you needed, still take an hour or so, but she not to you.
Well, give them to him. He's not going to be dealing with it. I mean, they're my constituents too, but he's, they're a lot of them to be dealing with on a regular basis. I'll live any way I can, but. Sir? George Crackerwell, of experience at the table, better words. I fisted with him. He, I expected he might at least throw a name out, but he didn't. I don't know what he'd say, he was contacting me about it, so I gave him an opportunity two times and I hadn't heard back. So he's a visitor. He, he was more concerned, talking about other things that were of more interest to him than this. He's got a lot on the plate. Uh, is there a need to pay bills at, at the final meeting? Twenty-seventh is, we approved that as a date, guys.
We will have court bills, yes.
If we can get a court, I may put this on the agenda. Yep, are you going to be on cruise somewhere?
No, I've been here. He said he wasn't.
All right, well, we can, uh, at least we got, we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Uh, eight plus a couple more, uh, we've got eight or ten names to at least try to vet. I think we'd be doing the citizens a, uh, a better service by trying to vet them than to me putting a stop tag on them. Getting them darts, I got a sack here and just throw them, you know? All right? Well, uh, yeah, could we put on? Next agenda. Two, three, ready. Order created, anybody else?
I'll get the next one.
So, just. He didn't do it in the day, I wonder. Election day on the black day of, election was on the, election day. Was that it? Was the election day a fifth?
Yes.
Yeah, it, that's what I thought. Fifth, day, and those are the votes. On January first, show this, next three, it'll serve two here. On January first. And two, uh, which are, they're one-year term. Their answer will be two-year term. You got somebody saying, somebody there?
Uh, this was, I just, uh, got. She said she is emailing the, the, or all six of them.
Tell them, she emailed the phone or text?
Sorry, did she text him or email him?
She said email.
Are you sending them to me too or just? Thank you so much. Yes. All right, be careful of death. Next meeting. Well, twenty-seven, twenty-four. Be a very short meeting. Good, um, well, twenty-seven. Twenty-seven.
Actually, the coordinate is twenty-fifth, it's Christie's day.
Yes, I would bump it to another day, which is.
Friday.
Friday. Have beer in the morning. They'll be getting caught tied if they show up on the first. All right, let's move on to aisle number ten. Consideration discussion possible vote to approve proposed cameras report for November fifth. General God election. General John election. I would say, I would read your summary.
Read my summary. Yeah. Official presentation of the twenty twenty-four general election. With the, that was held on November fifth. We had a total, the total votes that were cast were twelve thousand eight hundred forty-one.
If I might interrupt you, I look back four years ago, and that's about a couple hundred more than that now. I thought it was a much bigger turnout, but we got, we had twelve thousand plus four years ago as well. Do the big election into go ahead, I won't bother you. Promise you.
No, I don't believe that for me, but that's okay. Now, the president, the vice president race, Don Trump, David Vance, ten thousand five hundred twenty-four. Harrison Walz, two thousand one hundred seventy-five. Oliver and Matt Chlamak, forty-nine. Stein and Ware, forty-one. U.S. Senator, Free, ten thousand one hundred eighteen. Oliver, two thousand three hundred thirty-eight. Brown, two hundred fifty-four. U.S. Representative District Eight, Robert Earl, ten thousand four hundred sixty. Rod Jones, two thousand nine hundred. Robo Commissioner, Claddock, ten thousand one hundred twenty, oh, ten thousand one hundred and nine. Culver, nineteen, eighteen, one thousand nine hundred and eighteen. Dunlap, two hundred ninety-nine. Estenova, one hundred thirty-three. Chief Justice, Supreme Court Place Two, Blatter, ten thousand four hundred fifty-three. Jones, two thousand twenty-five. Justice, Supreme Court Place Four, DeBarn, ten thousand three hundred sixty-seven. Williams, two thousand one hundred and two. Justice, Supreme Court Place Six, Blaine, ten thousand two hundred three. Goldstein, one thousand nine hundred fifty. Robertson, three hundred. Presiding Judge Court Criminal Appeals. Shek, Shnick, now, ten thousand three hundred seventy-eight. Taylor, two thousand eighty-two. Judge Court Criminal Appeals, twenty-seven. Pollard, ten thousand four hundred twelve. Mulver, two thousand twenty-three. Judge Court Criminal Appeals, Place Eight. Enwick, ten thousand four hundred fifty-two. Anam, nine, one thousand nine hundred and fifty-two. State Representative District Eighteen, Hope, ten thousand three hundred twenty-nine. Stale, one thousand six hundred seventy-seven. Justice, nine Court Appeals, District Place Four, Johnson, eleven thousand one hundred eighty-five. Justice, nine Court Appeals, District Place Four, Chambers, eleven thousand eighty-five. District Judge, or Eleventh Judicial, Judicial District, Wells, eleven thousand eighty-six. Sheriff, Houston, eleven thousand three hundred twenty-nine. Taxation Collective, Davis, eleven thousand three hundred twenty-nine.
They got the same amount of work, dude. That's, that's incredible. Go ahead.
It happens. County Commissioner, Person One, Sweeney, two thousand seven hundred fifty-nine. County Commissioner, Person Three, Dominique, two thousand three hundred seventy-three. County Constable, Person One, Phillips, two thousand seven hundred and eight. County Constable, Person Two, Ashley, two thousand nine and eight. County Constable, Person Three, Free, two thousand three hundred and fifty-eight. County Constable, Person Four, Cosby, three thousand six hundred and nineteen. San Francisco County Emergency Services District, Number Two, Proposition A.
That's interesting. Constable races, usually they're real close to about the same, because if we're doing our census right, you know, it's supposed to be within five percent of each other's population lines. I guess constituents in Crete Saint Four are based on a constable race. It seemed to be more in those that come into the polls. That's just a brief observation. Go ahead.
San Francisco County Emergency Services District, Number Two, Proposition A. Four, two hundred fifty-one, against seventy-five. City of Shepherd Mayor, Minton, six hundred and five. City of Shepherd, all the person, vote number one or two. LaCoss, four hundred and thirty-six. Stockwell, Almanzen, one hundred fifty-six. Holmes, one hundred and sixty. Shepherd Independent School District Trustee, Position Six. Landers, nine, one thousand nine hundred seventy-one. Johnson, seven hundred eighty-five. Shepherd Independent School District Trustee, Position Seven. Roden, one thousand three hundred ninety-nine. Davis, six hundred twenty-seven. McGill, three hundred ninety-six. Aronel, three hundred and fifty-two. Colsway, Oakhurst Consolidated Independent School District, Proposition A. Four, two thousand eight hundred fifty-two, against four thousand six hundred and.
And that was the road violation, correct? What that was, a road violation? Go ahead.
Wells Independent School District, Proposition A. Four, ninety-two, against two hundred twenty-seven. Wells Independent School District, Proposition B. Four, eighty-three, against two hundred thirty-six. Wells Independent School District, Proposition C. Four, eighty-four, against two hundred thirty-four. The votes included seven, uh, forty-seven provisional ballots passed countywide, and thirty-seven of those ballots were, were eight to be counted, and only ten that were rejected.
I make a motion to approve. Propose and cancel. You did a good job. I know it's personally, you did a good job.
I'm, I'm still trying to get out the note, but it's, it's coming around. Thank you.
I have a motion by Commissioner, you know, a second by Commissioner McNally. Any other comments, questions? Y'all, if they ever say aye, any opposed, ayes, evades, you know, five to zero.
You all good?
Thank you so much. Good job. Thank you very, very much. Item number eleven. Consideration discussion possible vote for approved amendment to the National Dislocated Worker Contract, Public Works Labor and Job Description, to replace city language for counties, update assigned tasks, and add D.P. Ward as supervisor at Magnus. He's already the supervisor.
But he's not. Okay, um, good morning. So when this contract was originally approved, it was approved for commissioners as supervisors. And I gave you a document this morning that looks like this. So I have to go out each month and monitor the people that are in these positions for the National Dislocated Worker Grant. And based upon the monitoring that I did for last month, the county is not in compliance with the contract. The, these are the questions that are asked, and if you look at the third page, that's the Public Work jobs description. The first thing I will take responsibility for, because it's done by workforce, but it says the job is to clean up recovery, including repair, renovation, reconstruction of damaged structures, facilities, and land located within a segment, but this contract could account. So that should say county.
Well, now, we have interlocal agreements with all three missed counties. If they do some work, I would submit to you, if they were using those hands to county people to work on, of city roads, that, that interlocal would allow that, but I agree, it probably does need to say county.
And that's what I was going to say. You have.
Providing you a loophole is what I was trying to do.
Okay, so then it should say, maybe county and city, or if it said county, and you have an interlocal agreement.
Bringing that to your attention, just so.
Why was I asking?
I have no idea whether they worked on any city jobs or not, but it could be.
Okay, the other thing is, when the job description, workforce.
When you say we're not in compliance, do you mean because we got city instead of county, or?
Well, that's one thing. Uh, there are three things.
What's the other ones?
If you look at the job description, it says repairing roads, patching potholes, patching all these things.
Yes.
I had a conversation after my monitoring with Commissioner McNally. All those things are done by Rowan Bridge. The person that's placed in this position, she told me that she did some mowing, weeding, and painting. But primarily, what this person is doing is cleaning this building, the innovation center, the maintenance department. Uh, she prepared this room for Commissioner Court. There's a list of things that's been done that are not on. So in the information that you have, I advise the.
I would be, and, and other duties as supervisor directs, so you don't have to detail everyone. He does what, what happened. This was kind of written to go over the bridge, that's why I made that word. It was just a kind of a miscommunication, and that's what we're trying to do, is get everything straight.
So the second set of documents that you have, see, you have a workplace learning agreement with.
If someone turns around like noncompliance though, then am I going to hear from a auditor, from the worker? Because, you know, his document, bar for justice, and y'all were out of compliance, and now you owe the money back. That, I'd be careful where we shine in that spotlight, so I'm trying to say.
Okay, this is why we're here, and this is why I wanted to get this corrected. Had it not been me to come to the monitoring, then there would have been a bar. I live in San Francisco County. I understand what was being done, and the way that we did pass was because which individual cleaned the innovation center and this building. The purpose of the, and the, uh, the purpose of these was is to provide assistance for disaster-related things. So in the new job description, I put hurricane burrow and disaster-related cleanup recovery, including repair, renovation, reconstruction of damaged structures, facilities, and land located in San Francisco County. So because the individual was doing the mowing and weeding and painting and cleaning these two buildings, this is how I was able to get passed. The passing with the recommendation that would update this agreement. And the confusion is, the second set of documents that you have, that's the workplace learning agreement that we have with all of the departments within the county. So the maintenance department is there, and D.P. is listed there as a supervisor. But this one has to do with the National Dislocated Worker Grant.
That's the same hurricane burrow, because I expect we've got it cleaned up by now. So what are they going to do the rest of the year? This is, uh, if you just limited it to hurricane burrow, what if we just said?
I said, and other disaster-related. So anything that's related to disaster. The reason I had to specifically put hurricane burrow is because these funds were for spring floods that occurred in April and May, and then hurricane burrow as well. So what happens is workforce receive a lump of money for the spring floods. Well, then they receive a lump of money for hurricane burrow. So what happened in San Francisco County is that there was damage from the spring floods, and then hurricane burrow came and exasperated. They made the financial impact worse. So when this, when the funding is allocated, they have to, it has to say floods or burrow. So when I explain to them that our situation in San Francisco County is exasperated, that's where I put hurricane burrow. But if there are still some residual damage covered, or there's streams that's been removed, or anything that's related to the spring floods, it'll be covered.
Well, actually, I misspoke, and I think we still, we're still working on.
Yes.
Like a breeder.
You do. So that's why I wanted to make sure that there was no loophole where this was concerned, so that everything is covered for the county. And then to make, so that I don't have to keep coming back for a small change. Um, you have, this page, it has the amendment, so I need you to sign there, Judge. But then you have another document that has on the precinct on it. I need the commissioners to sign there, and then if the commissioners tell me who their worksite supervisor is going to be, then I can go and get those individuals' signature, because the previous agreement had your signature on it as worksite supervisor, Judge, and I know that you're not monitoring the people that are in precincts. So the young lady that is doing the job now is working in the maintenance department. So I added the maintenance department onto this National Dislocated Worker Grant. Now, in my conversation with Commissioner McNally, there are some things on here that relate to Rowan Bridge. So she could be transferred from maintenance to Rowan Bridge, but that's a whole lot of paperwork that needs to be done. So if we change the language and add the maintenance department, then that takes care of that, and the county is a hundred percent in compliance. With the other agreement that you have in front of you, this one needs to be revised as well, because what happens is, um.
Okay, I see one in here that says, San Francisco County Office of Emergency Management, hearing after emergency training to provide, that's the workplace learning.
Yes, the workplace learning. So the whole agreement was done for emergency management with you as the.
I agree, and you went and got the commissioner's side. My name ain't on it.
Well, at the time that I came to the commissioner's court, you were absent, and the commissioner.
That thing gone right that second, man.
Yes, sir.
He didn't have anything to do with the person, yeah?
Correct, but he was presiding over the court in your absence. When you sign the amendment to that agreement, then your name goes on fire as the signer of the name. But I need the commissioners to sign, because the individuals that would be working would be in their precincts. I need D.P. to sign, because he already has somebody working in his department. Now, these, these agreements, um, if we talk money, the person that has been approved, is approved for, let's see here. That she's approved for two thousand eighty hours. And if you divide that by forty hours a week, that comes to fifty two weeks. If you divide that by four weeks in a month, then that's thirteen months. This, um, person is making fifteen dollars an hour, times forty hours a week, that's six hundred dollars. Times four weeks is twenty four hundred, and if she works a full twelve months, that's twenty eight thousand eight hundred dollars that the county is not paying in a position.
I appreciate that, we need to respect the rule.
Right, and so what I'm trying to do is get more people in these positions, and it's gonna help with the county budget. And then once those individuals complete the program, if you have a position open, you can hire that individual, because they already work with you. So, um, because this is money that workforce is paying, what I would like to ask at the court is, um, when there are minor changes like this, if, since the. Also, in the other stack of information you have, I received an email from Ms. Tony Matthews, and she says that the treasury department takes up all the new hard paperwork, the drug testing, they maintain the whole files, they handle payroll. If they do all of these things, then I think the county treasurer should be the contact person. So let's say somebody comes in and they want to participate in one of these programs, or if they come and apply for a job that the county has open, then she can then refer them to workforce. If they meet the eligible requirements for workforce, we can put them in one of these programs, and it's gonna say on your salary. So, um, that second agreement that you have, what I also did, the, the one about the departments, it has a clerical office position, it has a day of dispatch, and a patrol. So what I did is added public works and heavy equipment operator. The hurricane barrel funding is supposed to go through June of twenty twenty five. When that funding runs out, if you have other people that are able to do public works or heavy equipment work, then it will be under the original agreement, right? And so, on this document.
Cause I got one that says, public works, labor, and amendment number one.
Right, it's, that's amendment, and that's, this, this is the other agreement where.
And then these, uh, and then the next one looks like the same thing as what I have. Then there's a workplace learning agreement.
Right, and that's, that's the agreement. Does that say learns in?
learns in.
Okay, so that's the current agreement, that's in effect, and the changes, I attached that, so you can see what we're gonna do on the changes.
Right. And then, this last one, this, uh, well, this one says emergency management.
And all that has to do with the National Dislocated Worker.
Another place. So, uh.
Yes, sir, and so that's why I would like, um, the approval of the judge, when, I'm sorry, of the court, when the new people are in, and their name.
Most of that, when we do yearly agreements with places, and there's little amendments, you know, not, not major, because they, I'm authorized to sign off. That's what you get.
Okay, well, what I was gonna say is, if you're signing this, um, get the department's qualified to sign off. If it's a small agreement like that, then instead of you having to come to Commissioner's Court, I can either bring you to your office for you to sign, or send the county treasurer's department and all the new hard paperwork and stuff, and the other level of changes, then I can get the county treasurer to sign off.
They're not in charge to sign contracts with the county.
So then, would I be able to just bring those contract, you know, the changes? The contract will be changing, it will be adding on the places for each individual, or if you're leading the other position, that changes.
Right, right.
So changing details like that, officers, job description, anything you don't have, can anybody else do that, or is that needed?
Something out of the Commissioner's Court, I'm the one that.
Okay.
So what do you want, Mr. James, the workplace learning, is that something gonna change?
No, yes, but it's the second one, that first one is to show you what the issues are. There's another one attached to it.
Yeah, but the issue from here, there's a bunch of names on there.
Correct, and that's why I'm saying, when it comes to January, we all have to change. See on that first page of that one, it has National Dislocated Worker, sign, everything that's changed, I highlighted it. See that circle? You just had it right there.
Did you just lay it up there?
This one, even when you were standing up here, I think, oh.
All right, I'm looking in my folder, but it's never made it in my. No, we're, I'm, big face behind it.
No, 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 uh, Tracy told me a dream, two, four.
That's fine.
So that's what I was gonna.
Did you lay it down, or appear it? I stripped it, and it's, it's in the book. Yeah, it's all on, just here.
No, you have to, it's circle.
Oh, I see, the circle, oh, here, maybe.
You see, and then go to the next page, you're gonna see all the. Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, thank you.